No, we're not using because.
You're ready, we're ready.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Wyoming Area School Board, September 25th, 2025. Can you all rise to the podium, ladies and gentlemen?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Aubrey, the head of all.
Keshmurski, Soufi, here. Valenti.
Here.
Kunkel.
Here.
Kazda.
Here.
Kotko.
Here.
Utara.
Here.
Campini.
Here.
Alberi, yes, here. We have a call, Mr. President.
Thank you. Before we start the meeting, I just want to inform everyone that on Tuesday morning, September 23rd, we were informed of a note containing a threat in one of the girls' restrooms at the Secondary Center, which prompted the district to evacuate the school. I want to report that the evacuation went extremely well with no credible threat found by thorough investigation by our local law enforcement. We have received many compliments from law enforcement at all levels on how well the evacuation went. It also complimented on the extensive security we have in place here at Wyoming Area School District. I want to extend my sincere gratitude for everyone involved in getting everyone out of the building to our evacuation site and home safe and secure. I would like to thank the Wyoming Area Police, the Wyoming Area Regional Police Department, and Chief Michael Turner, the Pennsylvania State Police K-9 Unit, our administration, Superintendent John Pollard, Principal Greg Riley, all of our secretarial staff and our teachers for the exceptional job they did to keep our students safe in a very stressful situation and made sure that all of our students got home safely. Most importantly, I would like to thank all of our students who were very well behaved and cooperative in this situation. I would also like to report that we engaged in a debriefing the following day with administrators and law enforcement and assessed how well the evacuation went and where the district can make improvements in these situations to fulfill our commitment and obligation for the safety and security of our students here at Wyoming Area School District. Dr. Pollard, do you want to add anything to that, or do you want to wait for your superintendent?
I'm going to wait till my superintendent's report, but thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. We will address any questions that you have on the evacuation or any concerns in the public comment at the end of the meeting. Once again, our comment policy is come up to the podium, you sign in, you state your name, and you have three minutes to address the board. With that being said, Mr. Aubrey, could you read the communications report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. One through eleven, as per work session with the addition of number twelve, Mike Miller, president of the Greater Wyoming Area Football, requesting permission to rent the stadium for a junior warriors football game. Number thirteen, April Work, Wyoming Area Kindergarten Primary Center PTO, requesting permission to hold fundraisers. We have a summary of applications received, custodian nine, hall monitor one, food service four, math two, LPN one, social worker three, assistant girls wrestling coach four. That concludes the communications report.
Thank you, Mr. Aubrey. I would like to ask for approval of the minutes of the combined meeting of August 19th, 2025. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Dr. Pollard, could you read the superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank our teachers, administration, administrative assistants, paraprofessionals, PCAs, buildings and ground staff, food service, bus drivers, along with our school police and our security and constable personnel, and the transportation companies on a successful school opening, and it's been a very successful several weeks here. I'd also like to recognize the donation of some memorabilia associated with Wyoming Area. A gentleman named Paul Sunday, who was a member of the class of 1972, has owned a 1974 Barracuda with a custom paint job by a renowned artist, Hank Z. The car has been featured in many trade magazines associated with car collecting and restoration. One of the photos in one of the magazine spreads includes the J. Sevesky Stadium as a backdrop. Paul Sun, JJ, has donated several items, and they will be displayed in the trophy case across from the office, so please take some time to look at those. And these are, these are the memorabilia, so you can see that this very beautifully painted car, so we have a picture, and we have an artist rendition of it, and then there's a copy of the magazine, so all those we put in the trophy case. And I thank Mr. Sunday for his donation. The Times Leader, Best of Greater Pittston Area Awards, goes to Jennifer Hines, who was voted Best High School Teacher, and Mrs. Hines is here, so a round of applause for her. As well, that is head football coach Randy Spencer, who was voted Best High School Athletic Coach. Congratulations to Mrs. Hines and Coach Spencer. The students at the Primary Center will welcome back to school on the first day by hundreds of self-portraits in the front of the building. Each incoming student in grades one through three completed this project during esteemed classes in the spring. The artwork is now displayed in the hallways throughout the Primary Center, along with other projects completed at the end of last school year, so you can see that that's a pretty cool welcome to school event there. I also want to thank Mrs. Penka and Ms. Wagner, yes, sorry, Ms. Wagner, for working on the improvements at the Primary Center Playground, working in conjunction with Evercore. Our play equipment has been fixed finally and adjusted so that all of the students can be utilizing it down at the Primary Center. We've added some playground equipment to be interactive panels and swing seats. Students now have play equipment that's accessible during all the recess times and is accessible to the vast majority of our students. The pavement activities are also available, hopscotch, beanbag toss, there's a kickball field, and a new basketball net square in store. I'd like to thank Ms. Wagner and Mrs. Penka for their hard work on this. They were part of the Northeast Leadership Group, and they worked with myself in our Title IV Building Stronger Communities Grant to help, and they did some fundraising to help fund this endeavor, so I want to thank them for that, and I hope Primary Center students are enjoying it. I'd also like to welcome our new Student Council, Junior Class Student Representative and Senior Representative, so we have Kennedy Devoe, our Senior Class Representative, and our Junior Class Representative is Ella Kiefer, so welcome them. Finally, I want to follow up with the community about the evacuation on September 23rd. Our initial investigation was related to a written threat directed at the Secondary Center found on a bathroom wall. Our threat assessment team began to respond to the situation and work through our response plan. Please know that during every step, the safety and security of the students, faculty, and staff was the paramount consideration when decisions were made. Administration, school police, and Wyoming Area Regional Police worked collaboratively on the decision-making process. Actions were taken out of an abundance of caution. During the time students, faculty, and staff were moving to the evacuation sites, they were monitored by law enforcement and security, and during that time, there was alert through our internet filtering system about an information that was passed along that was categorically false. In an effort to eliminate misinformation from being circulated, the decision was made to hold opening the honor pouches until students were ready to be dismissed. When the all-call system was used to make the announcement about the evacuation, contact information for seventh and eighth grade families was missed. In addition, there was a delay in the call system pushing the calls and the text messages out to the public, and I'd like to apologize for that happening, I know that was part of the reason we had some concerns. In prioritizing the safety of the students and the adults, we did create some delays in the dismissal process. We have spent the last forty-eight hours reviewing and debriefing with members of the administration and law enforcement to develop revisions and recommendations to ensure that the families are better informed about evacuation process and procedures for unification after this evacuation. Some steps that are being initiated, we're creating templates for our all-calls so that I don't need to re, or whoever is the incident commander does not need to recreate them for each incident. There will be staggered announcements to provide updates about the evacuation occurring and about the reunification process. There will also be specifics about times and locations as to where families can reunite with their students. We are reviewing our all-call systems set up so that all family information is more accessible and easily accessible to be used in the event of an emergency. We are going to start allowing students in the Secondary Center to carry their backpacks throughout the day. This will alleviate students leaving their phone pouches and car keys, house keys, in their locker. So I know in the past, we have not allowed that, but given our security right now with our baggage scanners, we feel confident that we are, we're able to have a safely, have, safe, have, statements, yeah, sorry, have students safely carry their backpacks throughout the day. And we're also going to improve our signage for our buses and vans so that staff and students can move to the correct van or bus more efficiently in the case of emergency. Finally, we're going to develop a toolkit for families so that they can help create a family-level emergency plan so that students know their home addresses, phone numbers, bus numbers, and emergency contacts in case a situation like this happens again. I want to thank our students, faculty, and staff for cooperation and flexibility during the evacuation, and I'd like to recognize our school police, constables, security, Wyoming Area Regional Police, and the members of the administration, and the Pennsylvania State Police for their cooperation and assistance throughout the process. We continue to investigate the incident, and we remain committed to the honor pouches. We will endeavor to make sure that we're better equipped and better prepared in the event of another incident. And that ends my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Pollard. Attorney Ferrentino, could you give this solicitor's report?
I can. Thank you, Mr. Campini. I'll just note that we did meet in executive session this evening, September 25th. Also, on September 18th, the purpose of those two sessions was ongoing and continued labor negotiations with our teachers' union, which I am happy to report, the head of our teachers' union is present, that those negotiations are progressing. We're hopeful to have a tentative agreement before the end of the year, which is a good sign. I can't necessarily get into the details other than to say that the negotiations are progressing. I'll say we also met on some litigation matters, special education matters, and some ongoing personnel issues. Thank you, Attorney Ferrentino.
Thank you, Attorney Ferrentino. Now we will welcome our junior class representative, Ella Kiefer. Do you have a report today?
Yes, I do. So for our junior class, we are planning to hold a basket raffle during the homecoming football game on October 3rd to raise funds for our class in the upcoming winter formal. We are seeking donations of themed baskets such as ice cream sundae baskets, campfire basket, a spa basket, movie basket, really any of the sorts. And in addition, we're working to design a shirt for the annual WIPA football game, and sales for those shirts will be announced soon.
Thank you. Now we would like to welcome Kennedy Devoe, the Senior Class President. Do you have a report today, Mr. Devoe?
Yes. The senior class is excited to share upcoming events and initiatives. Homecoming is scheduled for Friday, October 3rd, with the homecoming dance following on Saturday, October 4th. This year's homecoming theme is Wicked. We are proud to announce the 2025 Homecoming Board. Lucia Campini, Taylor Gashy, Emma Craft, Sophia Menta, and Sarah Wilson. All members of the Homecoming Board will be introduced to the student body at the pep rally on October 3rd, where the homecoming queen will be announced. This adds excitement to our wicked-themed festivities and builds anticipation for the wicked events. Senior class officers and advisors will soon be with Mr. Pacioni to develop a partnership between the kindergarten class of 2020, 2038, aiming to create opportunities for the district's oldest and youngest students to interact at several events throughout the year. After homecoming, the class of 2026 will collaborate with Student Council to plan Raveling Week in October. Raveling Week celebrates school spirit through the banner-making, student competitions, games, and more, building togetherness and energizing the entire campus.
Thank you, Mr. Devoe. Now, Mr. Kotko, could you read the treasurer's report?
Certainly. People's Security Bank and Trust, general fund, one million, twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars, fifty-four cents. Account, seven thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Period account, forty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Student activities account, one hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-one dollars and seven cents. Athletic fund, sixteen thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Purchase any pound, five hundred dollars. General fund account, one hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Series twenty-two, twenty-two G O N A account, six hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. Money market account, two million, fifty-one thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and seven cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kotko. Mr. Butera, could you read any additions to the finance report?
Yes, number one, as read at work session with the addition of local realty transfer tax, Luzerne County, twelve thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars, eleven cents, for a total of fourteen thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars and eleven cents. Numbers two through twelve, as read at work session. Number thirteen, approve the agreement with Berkhymmer One Source to assist in the printing and mailing of the annual homestead invitation letters to eligible residents that reside within the Luzerne County of the district. Number fourteen, approve the general ledger sheet, total one million, one hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred eleven dollars and seventy cents, and that concludes the finance report. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Butera. Are there any questions on the finance report on the board? Any questions from the audience on the finance report? Any virtual questions?
I just.
No.
Stevens was flowing, what is the number thirteen costing the school district?
About eighteen hundred dollars. Last year's cost was eighteen hundred.
Per month or per year?
Annual, that's the all-in.
Any other, anyone else from the audience have any questions on the finance report? Any virtual questions? Anyone have any virtual questions, they could email our board secretary, unishomes@dhomes@wyomingarea.org. Could I have a vote on the finance report, please?
Soufi.
Yes.
Valenti.
Yes.
Kunkel.
Yes.
Kazda.
Yes.
Kotko.
Yes.
Utara.
Yes.
Campini.
Yes.
Alberi, yes, motion passes.
Mr. Kazda, could you read any additions to the education report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Number one through ten, as per work session. Number eleven, approve the appointment of Dr. John Pollard as trustee for the Northeast Pennsylvania School District's Health Trust, Mara Valenti will serve as the alternate. Number twelve, approve the appointment of Peter Butera as the Luzerne Intermediate Unit Representative. Number thirteen, approve the appointment of Elizabeth Mead as math teacher. Number fourteen, approve the appointment of Jessica Cupano as Social Worker Skills for Student Success. Number fifteen, approve the following candidates to serve as officers for the PSBA 2026 elections. President, one-year term, Polly Arnold. Vice President, one-year term, Matt Benoit. Insurance trustee, three-year term, Kathy Spoh. Insurance trustee, three-year term, Roberta Marcus. School Board Secretary's forum, two-year term, Christina D'Angelo. School Board Secretary's forum, two-year term, Patricia Cuziano. School Board Secretary Forum, two-year term, Jamie Zanowski. Number sixteen, approve the agreement regarding waiver expulsion hearing and appropriate public education stipulation for student number three zero zero one one two four, pending final review and approval by the school solicitor. Number seventeen, approve the appointment of Sewar Abdu as long-term substitute math teacher pending final completion if necessary through the board. Motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kazda. Anyone from the board have any questions on the education report? Anyone from the audience have any questions on the education report? Any virtual questions on the education? Could I have a roll call on the education report, please?
Soufi, yes. Valenti.
Yes.
Kunkel.
Yes.
Kazda.
Yes.
Kotko. Keller.
Yes.
Campini, yes. Alberi, yes, motion passes.
Mrs. Valenti, could you read any additions to the education report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Number one through seven, as read at work session. Number eight, approve the request of Mike Miller, president of Greater Wyoming Area Football, to rent the stadium for a Greater Wyoming Area Junior Warriors football game on Sunday, September 28th, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Pending approval by the athletic director, the organization will be responsible for stadium rental and other associated costs. Number nine, approve the request of April Work, Wyoming Area Kindergarten Primary Center PTO, to hold craft fairs, LCC 1018 2025. Lake Lehman High School, 1122 25. West Wyoming Post Company, 1129 2025. And that completes the activities report, motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Valenti. Any, any questions from the board on the activities report? Any questions from the audience on the activities report?
Vanessa Smith, Exeter. For number nine, if one of the organizations that is associated with the school has an off-site fundraiser, do you still have to have permission? Or is it just because they're the PTO? Like if wrestling or basketball or someone else wanted to have an off-site fundraiser, do we still have to bring it here to have it approved first?
I'd have to completely double-check, but I'm pretty certain that all the parent and booster organizations are required to get board approval for their fundraisers.
Okay.
They do, and according to our policy, they do, like they do car washes somewhere in the.
Question on item number one, why are we approving things that have already happened in the past? Today's the, today's the 25th, and that was eight days ago.
It's a fundraiser that began on that and is still ongoing.
I know, but shouldn't this have been an August meeting?
That was a work session.
It was a work session.
Before it.
We didn't, there was no monthly meeting in August. There was no normal.
We may have missed it on that, at that time.
I was just, I was just curious, I didn't know, like, I don't know if you can do it, I, I don't care, I'm just curious as to why we're approving things, this happened on last month's.
You can, you could retroactively approve it, just so you have a record on approving the event.
Yeah.
Sometimes things slip through.
Yeah.
The timing of the submission, so oftentimes, we're just closing the gap on making sure that has the school with approval to.
Okay.
We make every effort to try to have them approved prior to the beginning, but there are times they, they kind of, the timing of the meeting, it doesn't quite work out.
Okay.
Anyone else from the public have any questions on the activities?
Number four. I know you approved the girls' head of lacrosse coach, where are we on the boys?
We're still having.
Don't have.
Any.
We're rescinding the vote.
We're rescinding.
Why?
She's unable to look at the position.
Oh, well, so do we have any applications for boys?
At this time, I don't think we do.
Okay.
So we're actively looking for now both coaches for boys and girls programs.
Todd Bonning from Harding. Yeah, I just had one quick question for you, Dr. Pollard. Now that we have this girls' program for wrestling and we can move forward with the girls competing against other girls, is there now a, a plan for like layered messages to the female student body to let them know that this is available to them this winter?
Well, we need to get final approval from the board about a coach, and then we can move forward with the kind of recruiting effort, so.
So final approval, once they're, once they're established, they'd be approved by the board, and then they'd be okay.
The board needs to approve an assistant coach, yes.
Gotcha, and then they'll start that whole process of communicating to the girls?
Yes, and I believe, well, there was, I believe you were at the table, but there was some recruiting happening at the back-to-school.
Okay, yeah, just making sure.
And we can make, we can make messages available once we confirm.
Appreciate it, I can listen.
Anyone else have any questions on the area because of the report? Could I have a roll call on the activities report, please?
Soufi.
Yes.
Valenti.
Yes.
Kunkel.
Yes.
Kazda.
Yes.
Kotko.
Yes.
Utara.
Yes.
Campini.
Yes.
Alberi, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Mrs. Kunkel, could you read any additions to the building report, please?
Uh, yes, before I read the additions to the building report, I want to make a motion to amend number five to include two custodians.
Thank you. There's a roll call on the amendment of number five of the building report, please.
Soufi.
Yes.
Valenti.
Yes.
Kunkel.
Yes.
Kazda.
Yes.
Kotko.
Yes.
Utara.
Yes.
Campini.
Yes.
Alberi, yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And number two, just approve the request of employee number one, three, four, five, six, to take a medical leave of absence retroactive to August 25th, 2025, through October 31st, 2025, with a tentative return date of November 3rd, 2025. And number five, approve the appointment of Steven Seeley and Michael Steinberger as custodians. Number six, approve the appointment of Fred Marinachi as a hall monitor. Seven, approve the appointment of Frank D'Angelo for a four-hour food service position. Number eight, approve the appointment of Ann Lydic for a four-hour food service position. Number nine, approve the appointment of Heather Bonney for a three-hour food service position. Number 10, approve the appointment of Denise Lombardo as an LPN. And number 11, approve the revised support personnel, personnel substitute list.
Motion? Second.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on the building report, please? Any questions from the public on the building's report?
Vanessa Smith, Exeter, president of the Wrestling Association. I noticed that you had four applications for a girls' wrestling coach assistant, and yet one wasn't hired. I wondered where we were going then with that, if no one was hired at tonight's meeting?
We're still discussing with the board and the.
Are we hoping to approve someone, have someone to be approved at the next meeting, or are we?
That would be the last opportunity, yes.
The last opportunity for this year?
Yeah, for the October meeting, yes.
Okay.
Denise Kearns, West Pittston. You're hiring an LPN, I'm just curious where you're going to station that nurse?
That we have the kindergarten center.
Okay, you have four school-registered nurses, RNs, hired in the district, they have teacher contracts. I'm a kindergarten teacher, and I am here asking that our students have the same opportunity to have an RN present at their school as the other three schools in the district. Is there any reason why the RN cannot be placed at our school?
Well, we discussed amongst the administration about how we distribute where the school nurses go. Right now, we prioritize staffing to make sure that we're getting our annual medical clearances and things like that that the students need to do completed, and then we will get where the needs are. We have a small population, the kindergarten center, we've opted for many years to station the LPN there.
We do have a smaller number, I agree with you, but we do have additional students this year. We have an autistic support classroom, we have some students that have one in a wheelchair, they have other severe medical needs, so I would just like the board to consider placing the RN at our school, so our students are afforded the same thing as the rest of the students have in the district.
I'll review it with the administration, I'll brief the board.
Thank you.
And what school has two RNs here?
Sorry, what?
What school has two RNs?
Uh, the, the fourth RN, the fourth school nurse does, like rotations around the district, so she'll spend time at the Primary Center, she'll spend time at the Intermediate Center, she will spend time at the kindergarten and the Secondary Center, so there's some rotation around, and then that person will also then fill in if one of the nurses at the Primary Center is out for whatever reason, she would go, he or she would go into slide into that position.
So could we put an RN at each school and have the LPN load out to help the RN at every school?
Well, we reviewed this with the administration, let me review that with them, and I'll come back with some recommendations for the board.
Can I just say that the nurse only comes.
Excuse me, you gotta come up to the podium. We have, we have protocol here.
Dr. Pollard's right, she does come to our school, but she comes for one afternoon, that's it.
Anyone else have any questions on the building reports? Any virtual questions? Any virtual questions on the building reports? Should I have a roll call on the building's report, please?
Soupy?
Yes.
Palenti?
Yes.
Kunkel?
Yes.
Gadsa?
Yes.
Papco?
Yes.
Bitter?
Yes.
Campini?
Yes.
Alburici, yes? Motion passes?
Thank you. Mr. Bitter, could you read the, any additions to the policy report, please?
Yes, there are no additions. I was running the work session, mostly.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on the policy report? Any questions from the audience on the policy report? Any virtual questions on the policy report? Could I have a roll call on the policy report, please?
Soupy?
Yes.
Palenti?
Yes.
Kunkel?
Yes.
Gadsa?
Yes.
Papco?
Yes.
Bitter?
Yes.
Campini?
Yes.
Alburici?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you. Mr. Papco, no police report?
No, they'll be next month, there's always a month.
Any other new business from the board? Anyone like to address anything?
As a parent, I send my own child to Wyoming area intermediate center every day with the trust and respect of our teachers, administrators, and staff. I know they care deeply about the safety of every student. I've been a member of the school board for nine months. Early in my appointment, I have faced with voting regarding the implementation of yonder bags. After listening to parents and carefully considering the issue, I ultimately voted against the measure. That said, my vote doesn't necessarily mean it was right, the right vote. It simply reflects on what I knew at the time. However, the fact remains that this is now a district policy. The policies have been implemented, and from what I understand, they were working well until Tuesday. At this point, reversing the policy is not the solution. Instead, we need to focus on addressing the real issue. Ultimately, the person who caused the chaos bears responsibility. While mistakes may have been made during the response, the real blame lies with the individual who set these events in motion. That person chose to create fear and disruption, and they must be held accountable for the consequences of their actions. In high-stress, unplanned situations, mistakes can and do happen. As a district, we learn, correct issues, improve, and move forward. And while it's easy to criticize from outside looking in, I ask everyone to remember that in those tense moments, every teacher, administrator, officer, even a student, were doing their best under incredibly challenging circumstances. Just as a person who caused this incident cannot undo their actions, you cannot undo the hurtful words that have been directed at the people who dedicate their lives to protecting and educating our children. Remember, your children are watching and listening. At this, at this time, we must acknowledge what went right. In this case, a potential threat was identified and taken seriously. It could have been dismissed as a prank or hoax, but it wasn't. And that shows our districts our waverly commitment to safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gadsa. Anyone else from the board? Okay, now, I'll open it up to the public. Uh, once again, our policy is, if you have any questions or comments, you board, come up to the podium, sign in, state your name. You have three minutes to address them.
Well, Stevens, West Wyoming. Listen, I want to acknowledge, glad everyone got out safe, first of all. I'm glad everyone is safe, so thank you all for that. Listen, there was some things went wrong, Dr. Pollard, thank you for acknowledging that there were some issues, as addressed by the IT department that had contacted me, there was some people that got missed. As long as some things are going to be put in motion to fix that in the future. I mean, that's all we can ask, right? We can't, can't ask a fire to unburn, you can't ask a wave to unwash things away, right? So we move on and we move forward. I do have a question. Is there a specific policy that says that the students cannot carry their bags? Or was it just something that the administration asked of the students?
The yonder bags or the backpacks?
Their backpacks. Backpacks, the Lululemon bags, whatever they're carrying, I don't even know what they are. But whatever, is there a specific written policy that was ever implemented, read, initiated, anything? Or was it just something asked?
That was, you know, for many, many years, we had just had that as a procedure, where we didn't allow students to carry the backpacks.
Okay, so it was just, because I remember even my daughter coming in, she was like, Dad, you can't carry a bag. I'm like, I've read through the student handbook, I've read every policy on the board website. I'm like, kid, there's nothing. She goes, well, I'm not getting in trouble for carrying my bag. I'm like, I'm getting in trouble at company meetings. I'm like, there's nothing written in the school that says you can't carry your bags. She goes, nobody else does that. I said, okay, fine.
Right.
So I said, don't do it then.
And you're, you're correct, and it was just an internal procedure, and it had been in place for many, many years. You know, we've, we've gone back and forth at several different points about clear backpacks, and that, that clear backpack policy went back to, I think, before I've been even here, which is fifteen years now. So I know that there was some kind of situation, they put it in place, um, and then we kind of moved away from it. Uh, and we had our situation in two thousand and eighteen, where, again, we had something written on the wall. We took some action, we ended up in a lockdown for extended amount of time. I'm looking at the faces of the faculty here, that was a very trying situation. Um, and I'm going to be honest, part of the reason that that exploded into such a, a uncontrollable situation is someone outside of the district commented false information, and it blew the whole thing up. We had it pretty well under control, and once that statement was put on Facebook, it, it kind of spiraled out of control.
Yeah.
Um, we managed this, the situation very efficiently at that point, but we were in this building for the next three hours on lockdown.
Dr. Pollard, COVID too kind of stopped us from having kids bringing their bags.
Yes, thank you, I, I appreciate that too, so.
So when, when we, so when, when can the students start carrying their backpacks?
I believe Mr. Riley's going to try to get a call out today. I'm saying right now that it is okay, and we will communicate that to the entire student body here.
Okay, that will, I believe that will also help females with issues, other.
Don't disagree with that either.
So, um, and.
And well, just so you're aware, those things are available now in the restrooms.
Well, I understand, it's, I'm sure females would agree that carrying their own is much more preferable.
And Mr. Stevens, uh, just to comment on that, with all the security measures we have in place now, and even with the baggage scanners, uh, the state police were here, right, uh, somebody told me that the other day when they were here sweeping the school, they commented about how secure the school is, with, especially with the baggage scanners, and he says he has not seen that in many schools. Maybe one other school has more security than Wyoming area has right now.
Well, and I agree, and I mean, well, listen, at this point, once the bags are in, I mean, they're already in, whether they're in a locker or they're carrying them around, I, what's the point that they, at that point?
So we try to, we try to do everything we can for the safety and security of all the students, and staff at the end staff here, and, you know what I mean? I mean, that's, that's the least we could do.
And I, I just, I apologize, can, and is, is Mr. Keshmarsky in good health, everything's good?
Yes, he's away, he's away.
Hi, thank you. My name is Margaret O'Reilly from West Pittston, and I am an alumni from Wyoming area, graduate nineteen eighty seven. My two sons have already graduated, and I have one more child in here. Dr. Pollard, you answered all the questions that I had regarding those gaps of lessons learned and what we can do better. So I greatly appreciate, um, all those things that you took, and that's the most important thing, is that when we find something like this, we find gaps, we learn lessons, and we, we work them out. Regarding what, uh, our gentleman just said about the backpacks, um, even if you could make an announcement to the students first thing in the morning, you know, saying as of this day, you can take your backpacks with you, and we encourage you to take your yonder bags with you. We encourage you to take your car keys with you at all times, because we understand there was a lot of children that had, that couldn't go back, obviously.
Correct.
And their keys were there, their, their phones were there. And regarding the communication, um, fix, fixing the callouts would be fantastic, because I did get the call at eleven oh six, that my child was being dismissed at eleven in a secure location. Now, I'm thinking for security reasons, that's why you said secure location instead of the actual name of the location. So even if a callout could to, can be sent to parents saying, here is a list of secure locations that can happen in case of an emergency, this way we at least could know where do we think we need to go, possibly. But otherwise, I think you answered all the questions, especially remind the students to please take their yonder bags, please take their keys with them, so we don't have the issue regarding that. Now, I had one other thing I wanted to bring up about, we are currently negotiating with our teachers now for the contract?
Correct.
And when is that ending?
Actually, technically, it already expired on, uh, September first.
Okay, it's, sorry, September first, okay. Now, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this, because it's details of the contract regarding medical insurance to the teachers, the premiums. Is it a hundred percent paid by the school district, or do the teachers contribute part of the premium out of their paychecks?
Currently, currently, yes, they contribute, uh, a lot of the.
Okay, a certain percentage?
Yeah, uh, a fixed amount.
A fixed amount, okay, and we're negotiating that as well, again, for this year to, um, just like any other employee, nobody pays a hundred percent premium anymore, so we're negotiating that as well for teachers to pay partial of their insurance premiums, correct?
The premium shares are a conversation and negotiation.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address?
He's in Indiana, Wyoming. I'm a student, and I thank you for addressing and apologizing for all of the issues that happened. But as someone that has contact with multiple students and is friends with multiple students, there was a lot of issues, not just regarding getting in contact with parents, but also getting back into their houses, and I've read the Facebook posts, and I've read good things, I've read bad things, and I think it could have went better. And I do appreciate everything that went well, but, and I will take accountability that some of the issues were from the students, because they would not be quiet. But, um, as someone that has a friend, she couldn't find her little sister for like twenty minutes after she got out of the church. And it was very terrifying for her, and she didn't have her phone, she didn't have her car key, she didn't have her house key, and she had no way of getting in contact with her sister. And when she asked to go and find her sister, just so she could communicate what the plan was going to be, she got refused, she got told no. And that's one thing, and there was a lot of kids on co-op that were late for work, and I understand that it's for the safety of the students, but I feel that maybe they should be dismissed earlier, so that that doesn't happen again. Or even with the buses, there was, they were waiting there for that whole entire dismissal time, instead of just leaving. And I just feel that there was a lot of issues that happened in the whole entire thing that could be addressed. And I know that my teacher told me that I could email administration about these things, but I felt that I should just come here and just address it to all of you. It was a very scary situation, and it was very stressful, and if it wasn't for, like, you, you got your, you had a situation, and you got your phone and your yonder bag, yeah, I wouldn't have been able to contact my mother, and she would have been waiting until twelve thirty, when we had plans to leave at twelve for, uh, an appointment. And it's just, there, I feel that a lot of things could have been done differently. And I understand about the yonder bags, and you didn't want rumors getting spread and everything, but there was parents that were sitting at home, and they were terrified about where their kids were, what was happening, if their kids were okay. And I just feel that getting in contact with parents is a very extreme, like, point that should be made during evacuations and everything, so that they're not sitting there for hours wondering where their kids are.
And, and with this backpack policy, that Mr. Riley couldn't be here today. He was here, he had to go do, uh, another appointment, but, um, I mean, he's, they've been working tirelessly for the last forty-eight hours to try to figure out, you know, what went right, what went wrong. And he came to us tonight and said, you know, about the backpacks, you know what I mean? The backpack policy, I mean, you can carry your, your, your yonder bag, your keys all in your backpack, and you could have them. I, I understand, in a, in a situation like that, when the state police came in and have to sweep the school, they need everybody out of the building as soon as possible. That's why you cannot go back to your, to your locker for security purposes. And, and they realized that that was a problem, people, you know, students have their phones, their yonder bags and their keys in the lockers, and, um, we're trying to do better. That, that's why, uh, he came to us tonight and said, with the baggage scanners, the bags are scanned, they can see everything that's in the bag, if there's a weapon or anything, so, um, they're, he's going to implement, you know, that backpacks are allowed, you can carry your backpack, but you can put your yonder bag, your keys, or any other personal items you want.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
And thank you for coming to the podium.
Anyone else like to address the board?
I want each of you to think about a, the situation, and if you couldn't contact your kids. We're lucky that this incident was not a tragedy, and we need to learn from it and grow from it. But the fact that they're told by principal and teachers to keep their yonder bags in their locker or at home is an issue that needs to be addressed, and the students need to be told they can have them. There's also the concern that you keep saying that we have the highest security. Multiple students have stated that unless they come in late, their bags are going through the scanner, nobody's saying a word about anything, kids are coming through with cell, extra cell phones, nobody's noticing this, because they're talking, they're watching, they're not focused on those scanners. The other issue is, there was a teacher who posted on a Wyoming area parent page blaming students. You know, I'm going to go to the mental health. Blaming students for not knowing their address in a crisis like this is not okay by any means. And that teachers should not be blaming students. You have twelve and thirteen-year-old students who didn't know their addresses because they're in crisis. I had a phone call from a parent, I was in session. I had a phone call from a parent and had to tell them to take their child to the emergency room for an evaluation. Because of this situation, they could not open their bag, they were told they could not unlock it, and they could not reach their parent. These things cannot happen again. Parents need to be able to reach their children and speak to their children. The other situation I have is, why aren't we changing locations? Something happens here, that building's right there, not only that, but kids know where that is. So you have a threat from a student, they may put the item outside that building. Why are we not changing? Parents can just be told you will be informed as soon as the child is there. Other, other school districts rotate their placements. The only people who know are the people on the crisis response team, because I've served on them. And the Pennsylvania state police helped. Yes, the kids got out of here great the other day. That I applaud everybody for. But as far as having kids with mental health crisis, and then people not addressing it, teachers texting their own families, that's not okay. And it wasn't every teacher, but there were several. And that needs to be addressed, as well as you lock up the yonder bags, but teachers still have theirs and are seen by students texting on their phones. This needs to be addressed.
Well, and, and just to your point about, uh, rotating the, uh, the evacuation sites, we actually have already discussed looking for, uh, other venues that can support our size.
Good evening, I'm Melissa Dolan. I'm a teacher here at Wyoming area. I'd like to first set the record straight about what a teacher said on the Wyoming area page. And my students could probably agree with me, because we talked about it. That teacher suggested that students talk to their own parents and have a plan. That teacher suggested that students have a conversation with their parents that says, if this happens, where do you want to meet me? Where should I go? What is your phone number in case I don't have my phone, right? We talked about this today. I thought, when that teacher posted that, that was a great idea. Because those are conversations that I think that parents need to be having with their children, and the children need to be having with their parents as well. Because this isn't just about an active shooter. Last year, we had to evacuate because we had a gas leak, and I think people forgot about that. And we could have been in the same exact situation. And if I advocated today for my students to have those conversations, to go.
And if I advocated today for my students to have those conversations, to go home and say, Mom, Dad, Grandma, Grandpa, Aunt, Uncle, whoever, if this ever happens again, do you want me to get on a bus and go home? If so, what's my bus number? And I told them, if you don't know, Mr. Felzone is right down that hall. You can stop in there at any second, you can say, I live at seventy-two Third Street, and he will turn around and he will chant a bust to you. Because that's one thing that he knows, is the bus numbers for every single address in this school. So I said to them, ask a bus. Or I said, are your parents picking you up? If they're picking you up, where are they picking you up? Do you want me to walk to Garrett East and meet you there? Do you want me to walk in front of the school? Do you want me to walk to the church? Do you want me to walk to the corner? Every child and parent should have a plan. Because unfortunately, this is twenty twenty-five, and I've been here twenty-five years as a teacher now, and this is probably the sixth time I've been through something. Um, second, I really wanted to say how much I commend these students, and I wanted to tell the parents that what a positive change after twenty-five years I see in your children. And I truly mean that, and they know, because I told them this in class. My class is beautiful. Classroom time is wonderful. I am enjoying every day I'm here, that I have the opportunity with your children to talk to them, to learn from them. We, I don't stand there and preach at them, I don't think I do, you what? We have conversations. I'm learning more about students now than I ever have, because they are paying attention. It's almost, is that my type? Okay. It's almost intimidating to have all of your milk in that room, and it is wonderful. And I hope that you can all see that in your own kids. We are so blessed to have them here, and I feel so blessed to have one hundred percent of their attention. It is such a nice change from what we've gone through for year after year. So, commend your kids, because they transitioned to this beautifully. Without a blink of an eye, they came in and they did what they were asked, and they came ready to learn. And, and I applaud them for that. And I thank you for letting us have the opportunity to have time with them and teach them. It really is a pleasure. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address?
Hi, Vanessa Smith, Exeter. Um, so I would just like to ask two questions and make a comment regarding your, um, school-wide non-Title I behavior pla, or school on, non-Title I school plan for the secondary center. So I took the time today to read all seventy-four pages of all three schools. It's lovely, it's really not.
Thank you for doing that.
So it says, attendance at school Title I plan for secondary center. In regular attendance, the all-students group did not meet the statewide average of seventy-eight point one percent for the year. Um, it went on and on for several paragraphs, and I'm gonna pull out the three things I think were important. Creating a positive and welcoming school climate, recognizing good attendance through incentives, making the learning engaging, and contributing to student motivation, monitoring data to see where our attendance was. Our attendance for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year was fifty-two point six percent, and for the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-three year, it was forty-two point four percent. What percentage of your students were actually in attendance on Tuesday at the secondary center?
I'd have to go back and pull the records.
It says you're monitoring it weekly, so what was the attendance the week before?
I don't have that big of a memory.
So, I mean, relatedly, students aren't gonna know their address and phone numbers and things like that. They're not here, they're not gonna like learn those things or think that they're important, because they're always home. So if we don't even have them, fifty percent of them here most of the time, for we're not passing state averages, it's very hard to educate them in the, in the manner that we need to, so.
Right, if you're not at work, you're not getting anything done.
Right. Um, one other thing on that was, uh, we are aiming to increase our overall student attendance by eight percent for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, do we have a specific plan in place for that? I didn't see other than.
And it goes back up to about the incentives and the positives. So I feel that the yonder bags are a part of that positive environment.
And I think they're doing great, I mean, commentary.
And we're gonna develop some incentives for students who get good attendance.
Are we going back to like, you know, attendance awards for those that are here all the time?
Well, and, and just to, well, why don't you finish up whatever you gotta ask?
That's it, I wanna know what our actual goal is to increase that attendance.
So, the first prob, or, I don't know, the first cumbersome thing about that statistic is this. First of all, it's a lagging indicator, so it's actually a year behind. That's not even the twenty-four, twenty-five year, that's the twenty-three, twenty-four year. So we never get that, we're always addressing a problem that's already a year old.
Is that, that's only for the secondary center too, based on that?
Right, so, but, but that, that statistic statewide for every school, it's on that future-ready index, that's a lagging indicator, so we're creating a plan this year for a problem that was two years ago. Not last year, but the year before. So, um, the other part is the cumbersome way it's calculated. So, you need to be present for, once you're enrolled in the LEA, the district, for ninety days, you're part of that group that statistics is called for. And if you miss more than ten percent of the days that you're enrolled for those ninety days, so, you know, once, if you look at a, a full school year of a hundred and eighty days, once you miss that nineteenth day, you're lost. You lose that point, or you lose that statistic. So, and nineteen days sounds like a lot, correct?
It is a lot. If I missed nineteen out of a hundred and eighty days of my work, you know, I probably wouldn't have a job.
So, but that's not necessarily the attitude and view that several other families have. So, we're working on that, and then, you know, it doesn't just include excused absences, like, it's the total number of absences. And we're also investigating a, a new student information system that we feel may have some better handle on how those statistics are pumped up to the state. So, uh, there's a lot of factors that go into it. We need to develop a plan to, to incentivize kids to have better attendance, and hopefully those numbers will come up. But as you point out, if they're not here, they can't learn. And if they can't learn, then when it comes time for those PSAs and Keystone exams, if you're missing twenty days of school, you know, that's a lot, that's half a marking period. So if you miss half a marking period of content, how are you going to perform in those tests?
Are we also losing direct, direct state and federal funding because of our attendance numbers?
No, that, I don't, that, that, that's not a factor in.
Not a factor in our, in our funding?
Hi, I'm Heather Williams, I'm from Wyoming. Sorry. Um, I know that you said that there was an issue with the bus numbers. Are you aware that it's also an issue on the district site and the CSIU portal? They show different numbers. And you also have kids that are on a completely different bus than either of those two sites show you. And I know you said that Mr. Felzone is right down the hall. Are you aware that he was cussing at the kids on Tuesday? Saying, why the F do you not know your bus number? Kids are not going to go down and talk to him. That's unacceptable, you cannot be yelling at students, especially like the seventh and eighth graders, they are twelve years old.
I have a hard time believing that.
There are multiple children that heard that.
And I could discuss personnel matters, we could.
I, I'm just selling it, but that's one of the issues that I have with what happened on Tuesday. It's not all of the teachers. You have several bad apples that are making fun of kids that are stressed out, that are cussing at them. It is unacceptable in a high-stress situation. I understand it is stressful for you guys as well. Like, that just means that you guys need more training. And if you guys don't have the training, look at Mr. Pacioni. Mr. Pacioni was the highlight for a lot of these kids, because he made them feel safe, made them feel a lot better after getting berated by teachers. You guys really need to look at the environment that you guys are creating, because it does not induce a good education when you have teachers that are like this, and have faculty that are doing this to these kids. Like, it's not good, you're not going to get the respect from these kids, you are not going to get a, a good learning environment, they're just not going to pay attention. You guys really need to think about that as you're working through like all of these bugs for all of this, that was a huge issue. And.
Dr. Paul, could you check on that?
So, uh, if you could kindly leave your phone number with Mrs. Holmes, I'll follow up with you. Um, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm going away, so it won't be until Tuesday next week, but I will follow up.
That's fine. And I have, I picked up two different kids, um, on Tuesday, and both kids were not in the same, were not on the same bus, were not in the same area, and both of them corroborated the same story at different times.
Well, and to address the bus number thing, so when we called Mr. Pace at Pace Transportation and said, we need to evacuate, we need buses, he rallied the buses he had available. So, for example, and I'm just pulling numbers out of, so bus eighteen is a bus route that I'm aware of that comes to the secondary center. Bus eighteen may have been on some other kind of job and wasn't able to get back to run. So we may have had bus eight, or thirty-eight arrive. So we're, and, and again, these are part of the things that we're discussing as part of our reunification. We're investing in magnet numbers, and that way, if the wrong bus hap, if a different bus has to come to run that route, we will use that. And then we're gonna make sure that we're aligned with what's on the side of the bus, which is on this, the bus route on the website, which will then be the bus route in CSIU.
Yeah, my son has a kid who, his mom checked the district site, it says, I, I forget what she said, I think it said bus eight. Her CSIU says bus eleven, and he's actually on bus fourteen.
Okay.
So, and kids can't know their bus number when there's three different things, and the parents are trying to tell them.
Which one to get on.
The right bus, and it's not the right bus.
Right, and that's why i- in the midst of the dismissal process, uh, I believe Mr. Riley and some of the other people that were up in the front trying to help get, facilitate giving kids to the buses, we simply started to read addresses. Like, if you live near this street, this street, this street, this street, you're going out right now to get on a bus. Um, and so that's how we, again, dealt with the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a few questions and then a couple of statements. Um, first, I just wanna say what happened the other day. I'm glad that everybody's safe, you know, admin as well as students. But I do have a few questions that kind of, if you could say, led up to that. Um, I might have missed it, but the yonder bag policy, so now I've been hearing different stories from the principal down to the teachers, down to the students. Is it okay for the children to walk around the school with their yonder bags currently physically on them? Not in a bookbag, not in a pocket, anything like that? Hand them with their Chromebook on top, or, you know, plastic, plastic, plastic?
Absolutely.
Let's, let's, let's address it. Let's get, because I've been.
So, and again, I, I can't speak to what individual conversations with, with other adults have been. My view of and vision of the yonder bag was that the students would be able to lock their devices, all right, their headphones, their watch, in the pouch, and then they would be able to carry that around with them throughout the day.
Okay.
Okay? Now, we had some people starting to make choices about leaving it in their car, because they were leaving their phone in their car, so they didn't need their pouch. In the first couple of days, we had, again, older students who were leaving it in their car, they were carrying around the empty pouch. And when the teacher saw it, or when I saw it, I said, if you're not bringing your phone in, you don't need to carry the pouch around. So that's where that may have started to kind of creep into, you don't need to carry it. So, you're, every student is perfectly allowed to carry their pouch. And if you wanna carry it empty, carry it empty, but you can carry it around with you throughout the day.
Okay, and then also, um, I understand that you said as of today, able to carry around the backpacks in the school. So if, what exactly is now carrying the backpacks around the school? What is going to make that different from anything else? Like, I understand you said you could put the keys and the yonder bags and everything like that in a bookbag, but as well as you could put them in a pocket, or again, carry them around? So, I don't understand exactly what the whole policy, well, not policy, but the change of bringing, like, allowing the kids to carry around a book, like, a backpack now, instead of.
So the rationale for it?
Yes, yes.
We view their security, and with the new baggage, um, uh, things that we have in, in the front, every bag is, is checked every morning. Plus, through the, uh, baggage scanner, they can see everything that's in there.
But the way that'll make it easier is, the kids will be able to take their books, their calculators, their keys, their phones, have it all at once. I mean, if you ask any student here, it's not easy to carry a history book, a Chromebook, a cellphone, keys, everything else that they need throughout the day, all in their arms. Having a backpack will fix that issue, and if something like this ever happens again, where they have to evacuate somewhere, which I agree that we need to come up with a plan for different evacuation places, I think it's a great idea. But they will have their bags on them, in a backpack. And it was my understanding that we will have, like, floating magnets, and they do.
Yep.
In case of an emergency, that was my main concern with the yonder bags. I wanted to create a good learning environment, I believe it is, from what I'm hearing from the teachers, they're wonderful, and I think the kids are doing a lot better as well. And having those magnets in an emergency like this, that's why I wanted to make sure that was something that we definitely had.
Yeah.
Because they will be able to unlock them, so you can contact your parents.
Yeah, that I was actually.
This situation was, the first time that something like this has happened, not the first time, I shouldn't say that.
First time with the yonder.
Yes, first time with the yonder bags. So it was a learning experience for all of us, yes. Were there mistakes made? Absolutely. Can I agree that everything was done perfectly? No, absolutely not. But I'm hoping, and after speaking with, um, Mr. Riley and moving forward with this, I have full faith in him and the administration that this is going to work out for the better in the long run. I'm sad and I'm angry that this had to happen the way that it did, because as, as Mrs. Petrell said, if I couldn't contact my child when something like this was happening, forget it. I would be here ready to, I would be very angry. So, I, I think having the backpacks is really gonna solve that problem, to get them, to unlock them in situations like this, and get in contact with parents and guardians, which is a main focus that we want to happen in an emergency situation, not in class. We wanna keep the classrooms, you know?
Yeah.
But in an emergency situation, that is important.
Um, just, I know my time is up, but obviously you guys respond a little bit longer. Um, just as the subject, as you said, that you're a parent, and if you weren't able to get in touch with your student.
Yeah.
Disregard the whole yonder bags. Yonder bags are not even in the picture right now. Me as a parent, I have three children, one in the secondary, one in the intermediate, and one at the primary. If my child was able to unlock his phone after they are in a protected area, and I, God forbid, something happened to my son, and I didn't get up to pick up that phone, and I don't care if he was even able to answer on the other line, and I got to say, I love you, you will get through this, you are strong. And I couldn't do that, and like I said, God forbid, I'm knocking on wood, that you guys did everything you could, and our children are safe, but if I had to live with that the rest of my life, that I couldn't tell my son, I love him, you're strong, you'll get through this, and I never seen him the next day, I wanna be able to live with myself as a parent or a mother to two other boys too. And that's the thing, if the phones were able to be unlocked in a secure, safe location when you know everything's done, and I, he's able to pick up that phone for two seconds, and I was able, just to get those words in, that's all I was asking for. That's all I would be asking for, again, after the kids are secure, everything is, you know, locked down, whatever the case may be, that's all I would be asking for.
They need to be on loan.
Absolutely.
Russ, if you could get up and speak, we're not, we're not shut, okay, please?
Don't signal me out, everybody was yelling.
I'm just saying.
Anyway, yes, I agree with you completely in that.
So, when we, when we implemented, I didn't signal you, I just.
Say, Russ, do you know that's not signaling me out?
No, because you were saying something.
Okay, like everybody else.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let me, let me answer your question.
Sorry, real quick. But, sorry, go ahead, Miss White.
So, when we implemented this, this yonder bag policy, that was our understanding, that, that the cell phones were a disruption in the class, and we implemented this program. In an event like this, the teachers were supposed to have handheld devices when they went there. This is what, what they, what I was explaining to you yesterday in the briefcase. The reason why they delayed the, the, um, opening of the bags was because somebody texted a threat on, what was it, Aristotle?
Yeah, Chrome. No, there was, there was an email that was sent that had false information.
This was after the threat was already?
During the evacuation process, someone sent an email, it was flagged.
That's why they held back.
Opening.
That's why we delayed opening the phones.
And in the future, I mean, because when we, we implemented these, they told us that in an evacuation event like that, every teacher was gonna have a handheld device where they could open them to contact. I mean, they're not in class, they're not disrupting. I mean, they're not in class, they're not disrupting the class, you know what I mean?
But, uh, like also...
And like I said, like, that, that happened and, you know, we acknowledged that there was some flaws and we're, we're looking to fix it and, and make things right, you know what I mean? So, hopefully it doesn't happen again, but...
The threat got sent on the Chromebook, correct?
No, no.
No, on the email?
So, there was a threat written on the bathroom stall?
Yeah, no, I'm not, that one, you said it got picked up by the internet, um...
So, we have a, so during the evacuation process, an email was sent out from a student to a person on the outside and said, basically, we're evacuating, there's a shooter, all right? Which is completely and utterly false, there was no shooter, okay? There was a threat on the wall that we had very little credibility to. We did not feel we were in imminent danger of anything, but at the same time, and I'm gonna play this out, if we do nothing, this meeting's still going on, right? And you're all still angry at us, correct? Because we did nothing, so we took the steps that we thought we needed to do.
But how was that email sent?
It was sent from a Chromebook.
That's what I just, yeah, that's what I just said. So, again, the Chromebook or cellphone, they're still sending out things on the internet. So, if they had their phone or they had a Chromebook, the email still would have been sent, correct?
We paused the opening to prevent further misinformation from going out. And again, I'm gonna roll back to our situation in two thousand and eighteen when the information was very erroneous, very incorrect and it created even more panic and disruptions.
Okay, and went directly to social media.
Correct, so...
I'm sorry.
And then you had another question, I'd please roll back to the part about the backpacks. I, I, you had asked about something with that, so...
Oh, you answered, I just, I was understanding, well, she asked.
So, they're allowed to carry, and I just wanna couch this with a reasonable backpack. Like, we're not going on the Appalachian Trail here, like...
Yeah.
Yeah, my son hasn't literally brought a backpack since I've already seen it.
And, well, and the other thing, as I was pulling in today, and I've seen this, like this, coming across, water bottle, yonder bag, and again, I love our teachers, but if you're in certain classes, those notebooks get hefty, all right? When they're walking like this, like they're hugging a tree to get through, it was just an easy decision to make. The water bottle fell, then the history book fell, I went for that first as an introduction. Uh, he gathered it up, got him Rosette and he came in, but, so we'll get an information out as soon as we get out of here.
Okay.
Before I leave this building, I will send, and I will make sure to include seventh and eighth grade in the message.
Um, speaking, I'm sorry, speaking of seventh and eighth grade, I did speak to a couple other teachers in a different school district. I know the students have an ID, correct, like with their school photos on it, right?
Correct.
So, um, I know, like, they, I, I guess, I'm guessing it's very costly, but they have a, like a scanner with the ID that they have to wear a lot around, like a lanyard and it has the bus number, their address, the emergency contact info, things like that. So, is that something like maybe the school board or, you know, even teachers can discuss or something along the, not that exactly, I'm saying, but along those lines?
So, all of our IDs do have a barcode on them and like when you go to, and in the yonder pouch, there is a little sliding, a, a clear slot that you can put your, and we, when we handed them out, everybody who had an ID from last year got their ID placed in that slot, okay? It has a barcode on it, you can scan it, when you come in late, you can scan it to get into the, to, to create a pass for you to go to class and indicate that you're late in the system. You can use it as a food service system. I'm making an assumption that we can then use that barcode also to gather other information.
Yeah, or personal information.
Right, and that's also, you know, as I said earlier, alluded to, we're looking at a different student information system besides CSI U now and that's going to be a question that I ask. Can I zap that barcode and get name, address, phone number, bus number?
Just for delay rea- like reasons, if we had that, you know, option, it would, I feel like it would have been a lot easier for anything, you know what I mean?
Correct.
Like, if half the days, whatever, kids, especially coming up to seventh grade, don't know anything about the high school as well, so...
Right.
All right, thank you.
I just have one other quick question, we just, um...
Yeah, because you already came up with three minutes, we're allowed three, so we have one quick question.
Yes, one quick question. Regarding the, the portable...
We have a, a, a good supply. So, we, we worked with the yonder corporate, we like, when yonder, when we're working through our implementation process, they have a ratio of, uh, students to, to unlocking stations, so they provide that many. I believe we have at least ten to fifteen.
Okay, so here's my recommendation, every teacher should have one. Every teacher should have one, so when they are in these buildings and when time is permitted, then each classroom teacher can, can lock, 'cause I know you had to take role, right? You had to take attendance, right? You had to make sure all the kids were there, so they go to their teacher, they unlock them. That, that's just a suggestion, I think because we have so many children, ten's not enough, obviously. And then the, the other thing I wanted to bring up, which I, I heard from, uh, some children who, um, said that as, when they were talking about the incident, they wanted to talk to each other.
All right, we, we got, you had your three minutes, I mean...
Oh, you're so sweet, bless your heart.
This is a Riley, give me a call, I'll touch this.
Thank you.
If you wanna discuss with Dr. Pollard.
Hello, my name is Jovianna from Exeter. Um, I just had a quick question. Um, are we not honoring doctors' notes? It's been five oh fours at I U P's.
I, I saw your email, I need to follow up with you directly.
All right, thank you.
Athalia Edwards, I'm from West Wyoming. Like most of the parents, thanks for getting our kids home safe. Uh, most of my issues and my upsets and what I'm angry about has been addressed. However, there's just something the school should also think about, the fact that they were sitting ducks. If there was a shooter, if that was a bomb, they were sitting ducks for ninety minutes, ninety minutes. And even if there was a shooter, say it was in the school or not, you shipped them outside for enough, like almost an hour. They were sitting ducks. In a situation like this, the kids should have been put on a bus, they should have been taken somewhere to another location. Then, we determine where do they go. There was parents coming because they had no idea, they were just told a secure location and being dismissed. So, parents that think, okay, my kids are walkers, I'm gonna go get my walker. Some were allowed to walk home, some were not allowed to walk home. So, and, and one parent was like, my kid's a bus, not a bus driver, he's a walker. They were said, we don't care, get on the bus. My child was also yelled at by Mr. Fauzum. He wasn't cursed, he wasn't cursed at, but he did hear of the cursing. He was told, because of, I guess, either he heard them or didn't hear them, but he said, you didn't call my bus and he was per- perjured to him and said, yes, your bus was called, you weren't listening. In a situation like that, there's so much going on, even if the kid heard you, doesn't mean he completely understood. So, my main concern is just the sitting ducks and, they should be loaded, let's see, I have it written down here. Um, that was basically it, that they were sitting ducks and that was my biggest complaint. I was okay with the yonder bag, I was okay in trusting the school to get my kid where they needed to be, so I wasn't upset that my kid gonna call me. Luckily, he did get a phone from a friend, he called, he said, Mom, I'm okay, but he also kept me on tabs. One of the conversations that I, I thought possibly too is when you call, tell the parents, we're either removing them or they're in a location, please don't come to the school because on top of that, that causes more chaos. So, I mean, the news and everybody says this was handled great, maybe, but to some parents, this was not. It was complete chaos. A phone call should have came back later saying, okay, the kids are safe, they're sound, we're getting them on a bus, they're heading out. And maybe a simple little phone call, like, yes, you explained the situation won't happen, but how about a phone call just simply saying, we talked to bus drivers, all your kids were dropped off, they were home safe and sound, all were accounted for. And I think that would have saved so much heartache on this one. Thank you.
So, and real quick, so just to follow up real quick, so with your, the scenario about their sitting ducks, and I understand that, if we had had a different kind of scenario, we would have had a different kind of response. So, like if we thought that there was some kind of active danger, we would have never put the kids on the bus to wait like that, okay? We shouldn't have had them wait that long to start with. I'm gonna agree with that as well, so, um, and then you mentioned, sorry, what was the one other thing that you mentioned? Um, about alternative spots, oh, the messages. So, as I said, we have now scripted messages, so the first one basically is, and it, again, depends on the situation. So, we have like a gas leak, a bomb threat, you know, if the lights all go out, we're not gonna go anywhere right now. We can hang out in the dark until we get the buses here. Uh, internal threat, external threat, so we will announce what kind of threat it is, we will say that we are evacuating to a site. Once we get there, then the second call, we, we've arrived, here's an update on the situation and here's our reunification process, all right? And then, once everybody has left the site, we'll say everybody's exited the site, here's another little update and then we would have a fourth message that would kind of be like a press release or kind of tidying up the things, give you information about what's gonna happen the next day and those kind of things. So, again, I agree.
Communication is cute, you take away our cellphone, the kids' cellphones, you need to communicate with the parents or you're gonna have chaos.
So, so I hope that answered all of your...
Yes, it's true, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Keeling Chomp from Wyoming. Um, my question, because everybody has answered and asked all of the questions regarding the evacuation and yonder bags and everything, what are we doing to support the kids through the traumatic experience that they had? Because is there something set up for, like, you know, hey, there's, I know there's a woman named Miss Mamie in the, in the building? Is there something set up for the children to say, if you are overly stressed or overly affected by the situation, you can go and see her, she's here at these times? Um, because my son already deals with a lot and he is thirteen and has, you know, anxiety, crazy anxiety. Um, and he doesn't wanna go to school because it's stressful because it was, he was afraid and didn't know and couldn't get to his phone, but again, not the point. Is there something in place for the kids to go and feel heard and feel supported by their school and to make sure that their mental health is okay? Because I promise you, part of the whole, um, the thing that you were talking about before with the attendance, if they felt better supported by their school and they felt protected by their school and they felt like they can go someplace with their mental health concerns, you might have better attendance there too.
No, understood, and I'm gonna say this, so I feel that the yonder bags are a big step in helping support kids with, with mental health services or supports because we're all well aware that social media is one of the big drivers of our mental health concerns.
I, I agree.
So, and I will also say that, and I know that some people may disagree with me, but I feel that we have a very robust mental health support system here. We, we do need to hire one more social worker, that we're looking to do, but we have a skills for student success and slash social worker from K to six. We just appointed that person, so that's a class that kids get, you know, uh, support with. We have social workers, we have SBTH teams, we have a crisis worker from Jordan Service Center and we have our guidance staff. So, those, social worker and the crisis worker were part of, you know, they were in both spaces, moving back and forth. And again, if we had other situation, they would have not moved, moving back and forth.
Right.
Um, if the guidance was, uh, available and present and I know that, you know, we have emotional support teachers, we have paraprofessionals, uh, we have PCAs that all kind of provide that support as well. And we do have classroom teachers that are, are well aware of students who have, you know, those anxiety diagnoses or even, you know, they may not even be diagnosed with it. They, we just know that they're that kid who just needs that extra, like, you know, pat on the back, um, check in with them and those kind of things. So, I feel that we do a very good job of doing that. Is it a hundred percent, and I'll just say, we could make strides to be better at it, okay?
Are the kids aware of it?
I would hope they are. I know that there's a guidance classroom, like a guidance Google classroom, that they're all invited to every year.
Okay.
Um, you know, as we get, again, we get referrals from a parent, we will engage with those services. If we get reports, um, from teachers, as we have a student assistance process that, you know, if the teacher feels or...
Very aware.
Anybody feels, if you go through that process, you know, if unfortunately we have a crisis moment, um, that gets addressed and there's follow-up care that happens there, you know? And aside from those, we have options for, uh, outpatient therapy through the LIU. We have a group called Hazel Health that provides remote mental health services, um, that students can sign up for. Um, so, and we're in the process of rolling that out as well. So, I, again, I'm gonna put our physical security and mental health, uh, backstops in this district. When I tell people what we have at, when I go to see other superintendents at the IU and, and those places, they all complement what we have in place, all right? And that's all there because of the attendance problem and actually the, you know, we're getting out of, you know, COVID's way behind us now, but for some people, it's not that far behind, so we need to continue to support them.
As long as the kids are aware, because that's...
And what I'll do is, Mr. Piaz is here, I will follow up with him after the meeting and we will make sure that we get information out to students so that they're aware of what services we have.
It's ready to go, Doc.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
I can read Westminster. I'm just curious to know how the board members that voted for the yonder bag have children that are affected by the yonder bag in this building? Not a single one of you have a child in this building affected by the yonder bag? No one will have to wonder if their kid will have to grab for their phone in an emergency? Not one of you?
My daughters didn't have phones when they went to school, so...
It was twenty twenty-five. You don't know when your daughter went to school, but maybe there were no cell phones at the time.
No, no.
Okay.
They made out, there was, there were problems, but they, they...
There also wasn't school shootings, then.
There's always...
Now, we know what the plan is, thank you.
No.
And one was the plan and why, so tell me, the, the purpose of this was educational. So, why in time of an emergency isn't the bag opened?
I already stated that, we had the, the concern about misinformation.
But, uh, an email was sent probably in place of a text. Maybe a student said, there's a gun, because that was the threat, that there was a gun in the building. So, if my daughter couldn't text me, I would have been thrilled if she could have said, Mom, I think there's a gun in the building. That is not, I don't understand how that's a threat. I wanna know when every teacher's gonna have a magnet in their classroom to open those and if some other reason is gonna be discovered for them not to be opened.
Well, I'll review that with the administration and we'll bring it to the board about the cost, okay?
I thought, I thought yonder was gonna supply, uh...
Well, they supply, they supply a percentage of them, but after that, we're, we're responsible for purchasing them.
That's what was stated.
I understand that you can't open that immediately, but they sat in that building for two hours and got yelled at when they were asked to pick it, open their bags. It's one thousand percent unacceptable, I realize mistakes were made, I know what happened and you all got lucky. No, we all got lucky because you don't have any children, we don't have children. We all...
Well, the faculty and staff, there are white staff, they don't have the children.
We all still have children in schools. I'm not immune to it. And in an emergency, I'm just saying, they should be able to get their phone, have contact with the teacher.
Okay, we're not gonna...
Russ Herring from Wyoming, this is what I understand, it's all, it's not being down there. I get it, I get it in Wyoming all the time, it's, it's not fun, but I don't care about the yonder bags. I love that my kid's not on her phone, she even said it's fine. What I don't like is the fact that, like she said, I can't get in touch with my kid in an emergency. I'm all my daughter has. So, the fact that she feels safe being able to call me, again, I understand, you could, you could try to justify all you want that you were, you were saying, well, that my kids, we understand that. And when I went to school, there was no phones, I loved it, it was great, I'm sure we all did. I would, I would hate, I would love the phones go away, but you can't justify it, it's times are different. It's just different, sucks, but it's different. You know what I mean? Like, I remember in high school, I don't think there was ever, ever a shooting or even thought of a shooting, was there? When we went to school? I, I don't, I don't remember ever. But it...
Nineteen eighty-two.
So, two, how many are now? You know, it's a big difference, but anyway, I'm okay with the bags, my daughter's okay with the bags, but if I wanna get in touch with my daughter, I expect someone to be opening that bag as soon as possible. I expect somebody, I don't care if my daughter has, I told her right out, if you have to break that bag, you smash it on the ground, you rip it open and you call me and I will be there immediately. And that goes for any, I'm sure, any other parent in this place. Because that is not okay when she said that you have to worry about your kid and your kid... Because that is not okay, when she said that you have to worry about your kid and your kid's in there in full panic mode. I remember last year, it took forty minutes for them to call us about a gas leak. Forty minutes from the time my daughter was texting me saying, dad, there's a gas leak in this school. I was on my way to the school, I was already, already in front of the school, and then I got a, a call from the school forty minutes later that there was a gas leak. And I'm not the only one that was there, so it's not like I'm making this stuff up. This morning, I just have a couple of questions and I'll, and I'll be done, but again, I understand, like, I'm glad everybody's safe, I'm glad it's, like I said, it's not about the yonder bag, it's about, it's about making sure the kids can get in touch with their, their parents and, and communicate with everybody else. So just a couple of questions, what time did you guys find out about the, the threat, the possible threat?
Well, I, I'm not gonna go into those pieces of information right now, because we're still, we're still in an investigation.
Okay, so, all right, so anyways, so I heard a lot of, probably about fifteen kids said that they knew about it in first period. So I'll, I'll just say that, so again, whether you guys knew what time it was, so then we didn't get a call till eleven oh six. So that means a kid sat in school for two hours with a possible threat.
Well, as I said, all right, we evaluate.
Right, and so when you, once you do your investigation, I understand that.
We, we started to investigate, we assess the level of threat, how imminent it is, how, you know, is it credible, not credible?
Sure.
And, you know, we were making decisions about what actions to take. And as I said, the all-call system was delayed, so the decision to evacuate started much earlier before the call was promptly sent out.
Okay, all right, I, I have a question, but it's okay, thank you guys. So just real quick, so I just had a couple, actually quite a few parents called me, they were trying to call the schools, the school when this was all happening, was there something going on with the school phones that there was nobody answering?
Well, we're having simultaneously lots of people call.
Was that, okay, if that was the reason, because I, I, people called me in full panic about, like I can't get.
Well, first of all, there was no one in the building, but.
Well, no, this was for, yeah, when they first heard, got the call, the automated call.
Everybody was calling right.
Okay, okay, so that's, that was my question, okay, so.
And, and I'll have to double check, and again, Mr. Jones isn't here right now, but we do have portable phones that are part of our overall phone system.
And when you're getting inundated, I understand that, okay.
And they, but when we get our Wi-Fi set up, with the hotspot over there, they should work to be able to receive calls through the system.
Okay, and then just last quick question, so I know you, you hit on a few times about the, about the portable yacht, the magnets, the bags. So I was just, my, just a question is, so when they were over there for so long, so what was, what was the, I may have missed it before, what was the reason they didn't open them over at the evacuation site?
Because we were waiting to get all the information out about dismissal, so that they could have them on the way out, all right? So, and again, we, we are well aware that we should have made a different choice about that.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Quick question related, anything about Tuesday? Chromebooks, I understand there's no insurance for this year.
At this time, right.
At this time. I see there's repair costs listed on the site, twenty dollars for a new charge cord, forty dollars for hinges, stuff like that. Are the parents responsible for this cost if the items were defective when we were giving them?
If it was defective, I'm assuming no, but.
Because like we got a brand-new charge cord for my daughter's Chromebook and we're now charging them with my work computer's charge plug, because that plug sucks.
Doesn't work, then.
I mean, the lights go off, it's, you have to like plug it in at an angle and prop it up on a sponge.
Please reach out to Mr. Jones and he can help solidify and fix that problem.
How do we do that? Because we've emailed the email on the website three times with no response.
Has it been in the last several days?
Uh, it's been in the last three weeks.
Okay, I'll follow up.
Or two weeks since school's been in session.
It is the start of the year, so it is pretty inundated, but I will follow up with them and make sure we get some contact with you, so. And as far as the insurance piece, we had too many claims with the company, so they dropped us, so we are looking for another company.
How about normal wear and tear?
I, I'd say.
Parents still responsible for, for payment?
Well, we, we have a rotation basis where we start, you know, we'll purchase new ones, hand them out, and then we pull the old ones out of circulation, so. And I feel that Mr. Jones and Ms. Kuzlavich, who's the administrative assistant in our office, do a good job of, before they send them out for the start of the school year, that's part of the reason we collect them, so when there are at the point where they're gonna start to just become a repair, like, like, you know, it's that seventy-six Chevette you own and wanna continue to put money into it?
Yeah.
They'll pull it out of circulation and put a new one in.
I just mean, like, you know, my daughter's in fourth grade, like, she keeps opening it up and closing it, opening it up and closing it, like, one day if she opens it up and the hinge falls off, like, am I responsible for that forty dollars? Like, if it, again, I know she's not doing it three hundred times a day.
Right.
But I'm just saying, like, she's in fourth grade, she's a kid, like, things happen.
I'll ask Mr. Jones to follow up with you about that.
I'm just curious, okay, thanks.
I'm not sure if this was said before I got here, was this threat handled? Because we know rumors go around, and yesterday my daughter came home and said, the threat is not even, it's for next week. So now, as a mom, I'm terrified for her to come to school next week, even though she's excited for Spirit Week, but.
Well, so the, the way this statement was written, all right, we, we feel that we have, we feel that we have a very good beat on what the situation was and who is probably responsible for it. We need to continue to do some investigation about it. I don't feel that there are any credible threats at this point. Now, that being said, I'm aware out of some of the PSP, Pennsylvania State Police barracks up in Lackawanna County, that there's some swatting things, and if everybody's familiar with what swatting is, where they create a scenario and call the police so that police presence comes quickly, that through TikTok and social media, that those things are being kind of amplified. Some of the good news is that was all supposed to happen today, and we didn't receive anything. So I'm, I'm fairly confident that, I'm very confident that we don't have any credible threats at this point.
Hello, my name is Giada De Prima, and I'm a freshman here. Last Thursday, my phone, oh, I'm from Wisconsin, last Thursday, my phone was stolen. And it was right after I went through the metal detectors, and I recently noticed that, which. So I went through the metal detectors, my phone was never put on the table, like the yonder pouch. And thank God that my friend was the one that had my yonder pouch, because she was behind me and the const, or whoever was checking the bags that day, they did not, they, they threw the yonder pouch in her bag. They were, it was never put on the table to begin with. And so I would just like to know, and I, they were notified in homeroom as soon as my phone was lost, and it took a whole twenty-four hours for them to find my phone, which my father found my phone due to Find My iPhone. And they went to my friend's house to get my phone.
So, sorry, go ahead, finish up.
And also, I would like to know why we have to have our phones like fully off and on airplane mode if we don't have the trackers? Because if it weren't for Find My iPhone, or even with Life 360, they can't find my phone if it's powered off or on airplane mode.
So I, I would say that this, first of all, I just wanna clarify, so in the midst of the pouch going through the thing, it ended up in your friend's, like.
Backpack.
Like, in their backpack, okay? I'm not sure how that happened, but I will follow up with our security team about making sure that. The big thing with the, the phones going into the pouches, they need to be where the ringer and the notification, like, it can't be buzzing and it can't be ringing, so.
But do we have to have it off and on airplane mode, or could it be just silence?
I'm gonna say this, it can't ring and it can't vibrate, okay? No notifications and no buzz, no, no, uh, no buzzing and no notifications, all right? And I'll make some, I'll make some edits on the FAQ about that to make sure.
Anyone else like to address the board?
I'll make it quick, guys, I'm a little, little problem, you know who I am, John Johnson-Furtland, I just wanna say, I wanted to be on the school board years back, but after seeing this today, problems there that you guys faced, the heat is real, and I'll tell you what, you did a great job today, the parents here did a great job. And I know for a fact that law enforcement did a great job. It doesn't always come together the way it's supposed to come together, but again, this was a great meeting, parents, and, and you guys did it, that's some heat up there, I'm feeling it, I'm, I'm feeling the heat right here, I'm not even up there with you. Parents were great, they drive home a lot of great points, so thanks a lot.
I just wanna say something on a different topic, and I wanna pre, well, I wanna say that the IXL program putting that into place, and I wanna thank Mr. Pacchioni for going above and beyond to do that, has been great. I've come to you guys before about the fact that my son is working ahead, he scored ahead and it showed it, and Mr. Pacchioni and Mr. Wright are trying to help to get him what he needs, but I do wanna say that it was a great thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.